7061 City Center Way, City Manager Tom Doherty. Are we broadcasting? Okay, we're saying yes, okay. So, item number one, 7061 City Center Way, City Manager Tom Doherty.
Thank you Mayor, Board. We had entered in a letter of intent with Ms. English on the property between us and First Bank, 7061 City Center Way. And we originally had negotiated $625,000 with the seller financing the property for 10 years at 5%. And when I had my meeting with the financial advisors at Cumberland Securities, John Werner, and realized the severity, we needed to get rid of our funds. I asked Ms. English, I said, "Well, we would like to just go ahead and pay cash." And she brought back a counter offer, wanted half of her interest, which would be $75,000, to be paid, and she would sell it for $700,000. And that is why we were here, to hear Ms. English and to talk about it, and hopefully get some sort of idea of what to bring back to the board for consideration. Thank you.
All right, so do we want to hear from Ms. English? Would that be?
I think that would be good. Maybe if our city attorney has anything to add. I don't know that opinions, I mean, it's basically what does the board wish to do? And I think this is maybe a chance to talk about it, share some ideas, and hopefully be able to come up with something to move forward. Thank you.
Ms. English, would you like to come up and say a few words? Or do we want to?
I mean, it's really up to you guys.
Yeah, just if you'll go to the podium, just say your name and address, and then you can just state your...
Jewel English, address is 7306 Darap Lane. I'm the current owner, well, it's actually owned by my 401K self-directed IRA, the property at City Center Way. I had an offer, per the contract, we had to come to you guys and offer, you guys first write a refusal. Tom and I had come to an agreement that it would be 625, and I would hold the loan at 5% for 10 years. And then he came back, and so I asked if we could just split the interest that I would have made, which would have been 150, actually almost 155,000 on the property. I think it's still a good value at the 700. That's all I have.
Thank you. Patrick, do you have anything to add?
I don't. I think what Tom said was accurate, and I think that's the position that Ms. English is taking. And so, I think we just need to know what the board's appetite is for purchasing the property. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty, do we get an appraisal on this property? If so, how many have been done?
No appraisals have been done.
Do we plan to do an appraisal?
In this situation, there is no plan to do an appraisal. The seller gave us a asking price, and that is what we've been going off of.
Okay, but based on the lease agreement that we have with the owner of the property, we have the option of renewing that lease that we have now for $300 a month for the next 50, up to 50 years. If we decide to purchase that property, they can, the owner can ask for as much as she or he wants. But we're also entitled to first right of refusal. We can also get an appraisal, and the owner's supposed to get an appraisal as well, and we're supposed to average out the two, meet in the middle. That's verbatim on the actual lease contract signed by Ms. English and the city of Fairview, correct?
Almost. That's if the two parties could not come up with a price. Then they would get a, one party would get an appraisal, other party would get an appraisal, and then they would meet down the middle. In the situation we're in, there was a price asked by the seller.
Okay. We shouldn't be in a situation, we should be the driver of this situation because, and no disrespect, Ms. English, this is a contract well before I was part of, even part of Fairview. But now that I am, and on this board, I think that would be in the best interest to get an appraisal done on this piece of property. What if it comes less than what the owner's asking for? I mean, I could ask for a million dollars for my property. That doesn't mean I'm going to get it because it's not worth a million dollars.
Well, I don't think, we could have an appraisal done if it's less. I don't think Ms. English has to sell the property to the city, number one. Number two, I think your summary of the lease was a summary, it wasn't verbatim. The language is actually quite a bit more nuanced than that. And I think if you ask Ms. English, she has spoken to an attorney that has some serious legal concerns regarding this lease, that it's in fact unconscionable. It was not an attorney that prepared this for the city. A 50-year lease with no escalator for $300 a month on its space probably isn't reasonable. And so, I would, I have some concern that the lease would not be enforceable from the city's perspective, Commissioner Buffalini. And so, I think if you speak to, if you ask Ms. English, she's prepared to outline her position. And otherwise, I think what Mr. Doherty said was correct. There was a price made, and that's how they ended up with the letter of intent or memorandum of understanding. So, we could go through that process, but it doesn't mean that she's going to sell the property.
Agreed, agreed. So, you're saying that she's obtained a legal attorney, so the attorneys have been back and forth with each other? How come we're just finding this out now?
No, there's been no attorney back and forth. I had spoken to Ms. English. She had spoken to the attorney for her IRA or 401K. You're just finding this out now because we're having a public meeting about it. We haven't had a meeting about it prior. That's what the work session was for.
Okay. Is there currently, and is there still a contract on the property?
There wasn't a contract on the property. It was a memorandum of understanding or letter of intent, I forget how we styled it. But I don't believe it was ever reduced to a...
Does that still exist, or have they pulled back?
Oh, you mean the buyer that approached?
Well, if I understood the leasing, correct me if I'm wrong, I could, I mean, you're the legal expert. It states in...
I have a license up. I didn't profess to be an expert in any...
As expert as any of us, right? The trigger in the lease agreement is a contract being put on the property, correct?
I cannot have a contract put on the property. You gave a letter.
You need to talk from the stand.
Well, a letter of intent.
They had, sent me a letter of intent. It has now been postponed because you all said that you overrode that with your letter of intent, with the $15,000 that you have put into the account. So, as of right now, the letter of intent belongs to you all.
So, they, but that other party still has intent to purchase it if we pass on it?
I have not reached back out to them because the last I spoke with them, they pulled back for right now because you guys have the letter of intent, and there's no fight between them and us, so...
The reason I asked the question is I was just curious, like wanting to know...
I've had other people call, and people are very interested in the property now. It's only a matter of time before someone else, I can go back to them and ask them. That's not an issue, but...
What was their intent to purchase the property at?
Their intent was at 6, it ended up being 650.
Were they going to pay half of the interest that you could make on the property if they were going to buy it? Or are they just going to pay 650?
They were paying 650.
So, I guess my question is, why are we paying any more than 650?
Because you all agreed to do a 10-year loan with me for me to hold the mortgage for 10 years. So, that's what the letter of intent is currently at.
I understand that there might be discrepancies on whether or not the legality of that document holds water, but at the end of the day, it was signed by both parties, right? Does that not mean something?
The letter of intent is signed by all of us.
The lease agreement is what I was referring to.
The lease agreement is, could become a legal issue because you cannot hold my IRA at hostage, and that is exactly what that lease did.
Forgive me, but can you explain how we would be holding it hostage?
Yeah, you could renew it for 50 years, and I can't get any more than 300, and I can't sell it.
You could sell it, right? If someone came and made you an offer, then we would have the opportunity to buy it, and if we didn't, then they could buy it.
But they can't build on it. You have, you still, the lease is transferable.
Help me understand this.
The lease is transferable, and whoever bought it would be arguably, on its face arguably subject to this lease. So, the city could basically renew it at its own option for five periods of 10 years, so 50 years, and there's no rent escalator. And whoever purchased the property from Ms. English would be bound to the same terms of the lease, making the property probably not sellable to anybody. Because that's $300 a month for property in downtown Fairview is probably well below market. I haven't done a market study, but I suspect that wouldn't be considered a market.
Personal differences aside, this isn't personal for me. I'm just trying to understand where we are positioned as a city legally, what we can do, what we can't do. And I just, at the end of the day, just want to make sure we're not overpaying for the property. I know we're all sitting in here saying it's a reasonable dollar amount, but I don't, to the point of being an expert or not being an expert, I'm not sure if anybody in here has the ability to put a professional opinion on whether or not that is the appropriate dollar amount for that piece of property or not, without an appraisal being done on the property.
We can stand at 625 with a 10-year lease. I don't have a problem with that. I was trying to help the city not lose money because he came back to me, and for you guys, it would be beneficial to buy it out with cash, so...
So, as far as where the city is now, I think Ms. English reached out to Mr. Doherty, and Mr. Doherty can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm going to try to get us to where we are today and how we got here. And she said that she had an offer on the property, and shared what the offer was, like she did tonight, and asked if the city would be interested in paying, I believe it was 650...
625.
625 with a 10-year note to be held by Ms. English. And Mr. Doherty asked me, "Well, is that even possible for her to hold the note for the city?" And I said, "It's unusual, but it's possible, and you would need special permission of the comptroller to do that."
I did talk to the comptroller, and we could get that done. We would just have to have permission from the state.
So, at that point, I suggested that we at least get the parameters into a non-binding letter of intent. Not a contract, but a non-binding letter of intent, so we know that we're talking about apples and apples and oranges and oranges. About the time that we had done that, Mr. Doherty reached back out to me and said, "Well, change of plan. We have to use these grant monies that we received before the end of the year, or we'd lose them," which is pretty common with grant monies. And I think it'd be better for the city to pay cash for this property. And I said, "Well, you need to talk to Ms. English about that." Mr. Doherty reached out back to Ms. English, and that was not copacetic with Ms. English because she was planning on holding that note and making the interest off of it. And I think at that point, there was another demand made of, if the city was going to pay cash, then the price was 700,000? 700,000. To this point, to Mr. Buffalini's point, there's been no appraisal done. As far as the provision in this lease, if we go down that route, and that's fine if we get an appraisal done, it's usually a good idea to have an appraisal done. There's nothing that would require Ms. English to sell the property to the city for whatever the appraised amount is. And I'm not here to make the legal argument against this lease, but I can say that there's things in this lease as a lawyer, when I see it, and I realize it's been prepared by a non-lawyer, that concerned me about its enforceability over the long term. So, I think that gets us where we've been and how we got here today.
Ms. English, when you signed that lease agreement, did you have your personal attorney review the document prior to signature?
It was a deal that Scott Collins, my stupidity, I trusted Scott Collins. But whatever it may be...
That's fair. I'm not going to comment on that, but...
No.
Okay.
And we, if the board chooses to stay with the initial letter of intent, the staff will, I will move forward to do that. If, I think I see two options. And cash, 700,000, or Ms. English hold the lease, or really three options, or if she wants to... I don't know, I guess we give up our first right of refusal. I mean, I don't know, that would be a Patrick question. But I think there's not a lot of choices here.
Well, I think the third option is the city gets the property appraised and decides if it wants to buy the property. At the end of the day, this property is in front of this building, is in front of this building. And I think the city needs to decide how badly it wants to control the property that surrounds the campus as it exists today, especially with the development that's occurring on either side of, either side of City Hall. And, you know, but even if we want to, even if we want to buy it for a certain price, Ms. English has to be willing to sell it for a certain price. And so, while the agreement has a structure, how to arrive at a price, it's assuming you have a willing buyer and a willing seller. And so, oftentimes, you can have a lease agreement like this with the buy-sell, but if the parties are able to reach an agreement that they're satisfied with that doesn't necessarily follow the process that's set forth in the lease agreement, that's how a lot of deals are done. So, I don't know if that helps explain why, how we're here today, but I think that's where we're at.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, and again, I, either side, it's not an argument. I'm just trying to understand it as best as I could, as best as I can. Your opinion is that the map that the lease agreement lays out for us to come to an agreed price if we cannot agree, or to determine the price to move forward with if both parties cannot agree, you're saying that that is irrelevant, pretty much?
No, I'm not saying it's irrelevant, but I think Ms. English has made it pretty clear she's not willing to sell the property in cash to the city for less than $700,000. So, if we get an appraisal done and it appraises for 675, what I've heard her say tonight and previously is that she's not willing to sell it to the city for that amount.
And I understand that, respectfully, I understand that. I'm just, what I'm not understanding is why, how that can be. So, if I was in the position that the city is in as an individual on a piece of property, and someone goes to buy that property, and I'm notified that, hey, someone's trying to buy it, but if you have the first right of refusal on it, but if you want to buy it, it's going to be X, and it's just an arbitrary number that's thrown out there, I don't understand how we don't have recourse to say, like, you can't just ask whatever you want. We've got to come, there's got to be a defined way to get to an agreement, or get to a number that's not just what someone feels like getting out of the property. No offense.
No, there's no offense taken.
Well, from Ms. English.
I'm not taking any offense. It's one or the other.
I think it's a function of this agreement that was not prepared by an attorney. And I'm not going to sit here and pick it apart because I'd be picking apart our position. But if you can't tell, I'm not enthused by this agreement. If it seems like it's a good deal for the city, it's entirely too good of a deal for the city. He's the problem with it, number one. Number two, and this hasn't been, this hasn't come up yet in this discussion, Ms. English hasn't said it, Mr. Doherty hasn't said it, but Ms. English believes that the city is in default under the lease agreement for making several payments late on the lease agreement. And so, she believes that the agreement is not valid based on those late or missing payments. Now, I haven't thought out to evaluate whether that's true or when the payments were. I haven't seen the checks, but at least that's the, that's my understanding from Ms. English. And, you know, she, of course, that's her position. It'd be best coming from her.
When were these payments allegedly missed?
He's got the list. I've submitted all of them. There's also a check that was supposed to be sent a year and a half ago for back taxes that has never been paid.
Have you pursued getting that money?
I did with Scott, I did with Scott Collins, and he had told me that it had been sent. I'm not in my IRA every day. I don't audit it, and this made me audit the account, made the IRA, my IRA account, audit the account. So, you've actually missed a payment, and there were multiple late payments. The first year of the lease, you did not pay until, I think it was almost a year without making a payment at all.
Again, it just seems odd to me that that hasn't been brought to our attention prior to this, where it's now a, being used as a negotiating tool to leverage your position. It just seems, it just seems strange. Sorry. And again, I'm just trying to sort it out, but it just, that's the first I'm hearing of it. I mean, you know, we're in this workshop.
And we didn't, like I said, the IRA, we had not done an audit on the account. You know, I live here in Fairview. I trust the city. Unfortunately, I should not have. My bad. But, you know, that's where we're at. I'm not holding it above you or against you. We've put it on the table. It's either 625 for a 10-year mortgage that I hold, or it's 700,000. If you guys don't want to do either one of them, that's fine. I won't sell it at this time, and I will go through whatever actions to have the lease revoked. And then, once the lease is revoked, I can sell it to whoever I want. And I...
For most likely less than $700,000.
Most likely not. I already have an offer at 650. I've had other phone calls from people that are interested in buying. I'm not here to take or make anything from the city. Because I would love to see the city have it, but I'm not going to give it to the city for free. I already once was manhandled by...
No one's asking for it for free. I mean, I don't think that's been discussed. Again, the offer that you have, I think, is the bar. And I'm just wondering why, how we're getting to this point where, because we're the ones buying it, the offer that you have, we have to go above and beyond that instead of just matching?
You don't. The offer that I got was at 650. I came back to give it to you at 625, and I would hold the mortgage for 10 years. Okay? That is, and I'm fine with doing that. It was that you guys came to me and asked me to pay cash. So, I'm not going to lose 155,000 by letting it go for 625 to you. I'll hold the mortgage.
Let's see, like that statement, I don't understand it. Like, how are you losing money? You're comparing it to a fictitious number. You have an offer for 650,000.
I have an offer from you with a letter of intent for 625,000 where I hold the mortgage at 5% for 10 years. That makes you guys paying 755,000.
It wasn't, it was a non-binding letter of intent, so this is not, this was not like an offer that could be binding or... I mean, at this point, there is no agreement. There's been discussion about what an agreement might look like, which is why you do a letter of intent. So, hopefully, you have terms that aren't constantly slip-sliding around to avoid this type of discussion. But sometimes it happens anyway. So, I just want to, I just want to make sure everybody understands that there is no contract on this property. There's a non-binding letter of intent at this point.
To be fair, I, personally, I can always speak for myself, but it sounds like Commissioner Buffalini's in the same boat. Prior to walking into this meeting, I didn't realize that that lease agreement had holes in it and that that was a problem for us. I thought that lease agreement was what we were supposed to reference when this situation came up. And based on the lease agreement, to me, it seemed like, what Commissioner Buffalini addressed, that if an agreement cannot be met cordially, that we would each get an appraisal, and the average of the two appraisals would be the purchase price for the property. That, to me, seems clean and fair. I don't think third-party appraisers for us or for you, you hire whoever you want, is going to manipulate those numbers in any way. They're going to do their job professionally, and we can take those appraisals, compare them, meet in the middle. If they don't, if they don't agree, and that could, that should be the price...
But I don't have to agree to sell the property either. So, I'm basically saying I'm not going...
Assuming that the lease agreement is not enforceable, right?
Either way, I still don't have to sell the property at this point in time. I can let you continue to pay $300 a month.
Or allow us to continue to just lease it, correct? And then, we can have this discussion down the road. That's all I'm getting at, is I'm just trying to figure out why the urgency of this property having to be decided upon today.
Because every time I get an offer from an outside person, I have to come to the city to let you know that now you have another offer of right of refusal.
Ms. English, how many offers have you gotten in the past, since we've gotten into this negotiation?
Three.
Three offers. So, you've gotten an offer, and I apologize, Vice Mayor.
I have one official offer, and I've had three additional phone calls that I have not been able to accept because you guys have the letter of intent.
Okay, so you did get an offer for 650,000 on the property, correct? So, then you counter-offered to us with 700,000 if we pay cash. However, the 650,000 offer that was offered to you was to be paid cash, correct? Because you were selling the whole property.
Correct.
So, you'd be selling off of 650,000. Why don't we get that same option of the 650,000? You're getting the same exact money regardless whether we pay 650 or they pay 650. You're still getting that same amount of money. Then you could take that 650,000, reinvest it, and make more percentage than you can with us going for 10 years at 5%.
Well, here's the other problem.
And the other thing...
No, because they're, once they find out that that lease is what it says, I would have to dissolve that lease before I could sell it to anybody else. Because they're not going to pay me 650,000 when they have to let you guys continue to lease the property.
So, then why should we pay you 700,000?
You don't have to.
You know, I know this is your livelihood, and I get it.
I explained why. I said that we were splitting the interest at the 10-year lease. I would make 100. And how I invest my money and how you invest your money is each our own.
Right, but we're investing the city's money. It's not my personal money. It's our city money that you pay into it, that everyone sitting here pays into that.
That's fine. If you don't want to purchase it...
I'm not saying that we don't want to purchase it. We're not agreeing or not agreeing on that this evening or right now. What we're discussing is the sale of the property, the logistics of it. And, you know, I mean, I might be out of line for saying this, but I would expect that our attorney would be more on our side than he would on your side, and just defending us a little bit more, you know, in base of this contract.
I think, with all due, with all due respect, I do think that's out of line because I've been having these discussions with Ms. Jewel, and I have pointed out that the money of 650, she could take it and invest it. And I went along the same exact questions that you just asked Commissioner Buffalini. So, but if you're asking me, if you're saying, "Well, the lease says this, this is exactly how it should be," and you're asking me for a legal opinion about this document that was prepared by a non-attorney, even though the city apparently had an attorney at the time this was drafted, and this is what, this is what's relying, what you're relying on for that position, then you need to be cautious. And so, I do take offense to that. And so I do take offense to that.
Okay.
And you, and you have not called me before, although you have my name, phone number, address, uh, cell phone number and you could have called me, we could have talked about this, not in the meeting and you have not.
So, so right now we're on the hook for either six twenty-five, 10 years of five percent or seven hundred thousand dollar sale.
We're not on the hook for anything.
Or a lease. This is, these are our options, correct?
Those are options, but you said on the hook. We're not on the hook for anything. There's a non-binding letter of intent. We're free to keep, we're free to keep leasing this property. Uh, at, at this point, this is the binding agreement between the parties. And so this original lease goes through 2029 at, uh, at, um, three hundred dollars a month. Uh, the city cannot build or alter on the property. It has to stay green space. We can't pave it. We can't build anything. So if the city has any designs on this property, uh, either you need Ms. Jewell's permission to do it, uh, and invest in property you don't own, or the city needs to purchase it. Now, the city can continue to lease it. Ms. Jewell can, uh, seek the court to, uh, say that she doesn't think it was fair or she doesn't think that Mr. Collins prepared a fair lease or somehow she was, it's, uh, non-unconscionable or something like that. And I will stay at the city's position because, you know, as far as I'm concerned, everybody has signed it fair and square and this is the deal. But, but I'm not going to tell you that there's not risk. My job is to assess risk, okay?
Okay. Mr. Doherty, how long have you been the city manager here for, for Fairview?
It's, uh, November of, well, January 5th, 2023.
Twenty, so over two years now, right?
Yes.
So Ms. English said that we haven't paid taxes a year and a half ago.
No, that was, no, it was further back. He's, Tom has been on, on top of, top of it.
When was the last time we had a late check?
There is one missing payment. I don't know what it is. Do you have that paper with you?
I don't have it with me and I have told Ms. English, I've told her, I said, the city will get right on everything we owe. We have never, like, like her, it was the first I heard of it when she told me that day and she said, let's just wait and see how all this goes. And I said, well, we'll get you, we'll get everything evened up and, um, but a lot of that happened maybe, what was that? When was that lease done? I mean, it was a couple of years before that, 21, 22?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. So yeah.
It was the end of eighteen though. It was signed and it went into effect in 2018.
A lot of that happened early on, but, um, I don't know if that answers your question.
Okay, yeah, that was good.
I did want to point out one thing. No one sitting up here was, uh, on the board when this lease happened. I just want to point that out.
Exactly.
I'm not sure where the, how far, like, obviously we're not getting a resolution in this meeting. It's just a discussion. But my position is that the property is definitely something I think the city should consider purchasing and I'm not against that. I just, again, um, as it's been stated, it's not our money, it's the city's money. And I just want to make sure along, it sounds like Commissioner Buffalini is in the same boat, that though, I just want to make sure we're paying the appropriate amount for the property and not just a number that sounds good.
My opinion is regardless of what this lease, regardless of what this lease says, that when a city decides to purchase property with taxpayer money, the city should have an understanding of what the value of the property is.
Correct.
And I think that the city cannot go wrong by getting an appraisal of the property. Then the city needs to decide now whether Ms. English will accept that amount or whether she'll get another appraisal. I, I don't know. She obviously has faults with this, uh, lease agreement. Uh, I'm not going to make an opinion about whether those are true or not. I, I have concerns, but I have concerns about lots of things. That's my job to be concerned. Uh, but I think before this, I think it would be a good idea for the city to have an understanding of what the property is. The only way to know what a value of a property is, is either have it appraised or, or that the property sells with a willing buyer and a willing seller and then you know what it's worth. So-
Yeah, I, I mean, that, that's a good summary. I, I'm not against paying whatever is to be paid. And honestly, if we got an appraisal done and it came back at six eighty-five, then I don't, you know, and if seven hundred's the number, I think we could have that discussion. But if it came back at say five ninety, I'm just ballparking things. This is just for conversation's sake. Then I think seven hundred is a, a gross misuse of city funds. So I think it would be appropriate for us to at least, if we are going to continue this conversation, which I think we should, to at least have an understanding from a professional on what the value of that property is. I think anybody that was going to buy that property, any private purchaser of that property would have an appraisal done on the property before they decided what they felt they should invest in that land. I, I think that's fair. I mean, it's, you know, it's not, it's not favoring any one party. It's just getting an, a professional understanding of the value of the land. And I think the city should move forward with ordering an appraisal on it as soon as possible so we can have that information and be able to make a educated decision.
Let me add this. The letter of intent was approved by this board. So, and at that time, the board looked at the lease agreement and approved that letter of intent. Now, uh, any potential issues with this lease agreement have come out since then in conversations that Ms. Jewell had with Mr. Doherty and her auditing of her account. And then I was brought into that. Uh, so that's, that's how any discussion of this lease agreement, uh, has, has come apart, come about. It's been af, after that and concerns that Ms. Jewell had about, uh, the audit that she or her financial advisors did on the account. And so that was, that was news to me. Um, I did not know that and it predated Tom. Tom was the, uh, did the budget here, but he was not the city manager and did not know about any late payments himself. So that, I think that was news to everybody and news, new information since this board approved the letter of intent. And so there've been, there was, there've been changes and, you know, in, in, uh, the structure of the deal, if there was going to be a deal since the letter of intent. That's, I mean, that's why we're having this discussion tonight. It's, it's, and not faulting Ms. Jewell and not faulting anybody else, but it's frustrating because when you take the time to put the terms in a letter of intent, you, you think you are then going to work on a contract and we just have not gotten there.
We can move forward with the six twenty-five and the 10-year lease. I don't have a problem with that.
I wouldn't have a problem with it either if I had an appraisal that just like gave us additional information to know the value of the property.
The problem, the problem with that, the problem with six twenty-five and the owner holding the note is that number one, the city needs to use these grant funds or they're gonna, they're gonna lose them, which is, which is, which is what changed the structure of the discussed deal from the city's perspective, per Mr. Doherty's conversation. Second of all, in order for the, uh, owner to hold the note for a public institution, that's an issuance of a debt. So you need special permission, uh, uh, through the comptroller. Now, uh, that, that won't be a problem and the city can go through that process and get that permission. Uh, but it's just an, it's an extra step. So while Ms. Jewell is eager to do that deal, that deal may not be good for the city because the, the funds that we'd be using for this purchase, if it were to happen, are, are grant funds that, that we lose. And so bond funds. And so that's why Mr. Doherty was eager to use those funds rather than doing owner financing over a period of time.
Yeah, and, and I, I understand that. And I, I guess let me clarify my prior statement. I wouldn't be opposed to that if it made sense for the city. I'd be open to it, I should say. It's not the direction I necessarily am deciding I would like to go that right now. But just saying, I'm not closed off to any of this discussion. I just personally think that it would be responsible of us to have an appraisal done on the property. I mean, that's really my stopping, like, my issue with this whole discussion is that we just don't have a clearly defined value on that property.
Do an appraisal, that's your, that's your choice.
I mean, just for the sake of us having an understanding and having an educated discussion. I mean, I think, I think anything else is just us spitballing what we each individually think is okay.
And I don't have a problem with that, that's fine. I also know that if you don't use the bond money, the rating and you lose that money, it really hurts the city.
Yeah, it's not good.
It is not good at all.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think step one would be getting that and then we can have more in-depth discussion on what the city is willing to pay, desiring to pay, how we want to go about paying it, all of that. But for me, I, I, I would really like to have that appraisal.
So there's clear direction in Mr. Doherty and a head nod will suffice. Do you all agree that Mr. Doherty should get an appraisal? Okay. All right. And Mr. Doherty said that he can get it ordered first of next week. I don't know how, it might take a few or three weeks depending on how fast they are. So I would suggest that we put this on a work session for 30 days and hopefully Ms. Jewell can be, be patient and allow the city to work through its internal process. And then I think we can discuss what a reasonable purchase price is based on that appraisal.
I think that's a fair conversation and I think that should have had to happen a while ago, but I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. English, thank you. If you're willing to be patient while we get that, I think it would, it would, it would make for a more meaningful discussion, I think, for sure.
Sure. I already said, if you guys want to get an appraisal, that's, that's on you.
Thank you, Ms. English.
Item number two is TPUDC timeline. Commissioner Buffalini, uh, put this one on. I, I do want to ask one question. Was the timeline emailed to everyone? Ethan?
It was, it was emailed, uh, out about the end of January, I believe, to the Board of Commissioners.
And, um, everybody has received a digital copy of this manual?
Correct.
Okay. You have the floor.
So I was asking that question so, uh, Mr. Greer can tell everybody else. We get information, but it's good to hear from Mr. Greer about it and just to let it, let everyone know where we're at as far as TPUDC's, uh, book of ordinances for our city of Fairview.
So just a quick, brief thing, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. I will also, this is included in our report for tonight as well. We've submitted initial comments to TPUDC. We're compiling the final comments from our staff review to submit. Our expectation is to have all comments sent to TPUDC by the end of next week. They are in the process of drafting the public draft. Uh, the public draft will likely be out within, uh, 30 days. Once the public draft is complete, TPUDC will present the draft in this room to the public. Uh, and then after that point, there's a 30-day comment window for the public to be able to have comments on any of the 461 pages that they would like to comment on. Once that's completed, they will draft the final draft and then that'll be presented to the Planning Commission who will provide a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. The board will have a first hearing on, um, adoption of the draft. There will be a public hearing and then there would be a second and final read by the Board of Commissioners for the adoption. Our expected timeline for full adoption, uh, would be to bring it to the Planning Commission either in June or July, uh, with a, uh, expected adoption date by the Board of Commissioners of August to September. Thank you very much.
We good on item number two? Okay. Um, item number three, Commissioner Buffalini, emergency readiness plan?
I wanted to discuss, there's a lot of, a lot of things have been going on around our city and around the state of Tennessee, tornadoes and everything. I know that Williamson County has a, an emergency readiness plan. I know that the state has, my question is, do we have one? And if so, who's in control of that? If you can elaborate on that?
Yes, we were a part of the county's, uh, emergency EMA system, management system and, um, it, it, it piggybacks with TMA's and FEMA and we've got, um, uh, police, fire and, um, our, and also our public, uh, information officer are getting notified very quickly. Um, if there was a major emergency, uh, we would, um, do what we can, but we don't have the resources to handle a major emergency. And then, uh, we would fall into the, the, uh, plan that's set about by the county and then they would come in and they would take over and, and, and take control of the situation.
If there is, say, a catastrophic event that happens here in Fairview, regardless of what it is, is there a meeting point, a central point, someplace that citizens can go to get information if we have no power or anything like that? Is there some sort of a trauma center that we have set up or that we can set up? I know our police department has the, the trailer. Um, if that was to be set up, where would that be? Like, that's what I'm asking about with readiness plan.
Yes, we've, um, we would make some decisions quickly. A lot of it would depend on where the catastrophe is or where the emergency is, you know? I mean, you, it just depends on, on the situation. But yeah, we have, we did purchase, um, a apparatus that, that can be set up and, and used as a command post in, in such an event. This city hall was not available.
Thank you.
And also we get NICSIL alerts. Everybody needs to sign up for the NICSIL so that you can get alerts.
Hundred percent.
Yes. Anything else on item number three? Okay. Uh, item number four is, uh, Commissioner Buffalini, uh, relocation of stop signs in Cumberland Estates.
So some of the stop signs, it's not so much of a relocation, it's just a repositioning basically. We have two stop signs that were just installed recently and they're installed directly behind trees. So in the foliage time, right now, people are blowing past those stop signs, uh, and we can use probably two additional because we have constant amount of speeders going through Cumberland Estates. And I'm, I'm sure this is other locations as well. And I was just putting it on the discussion. Hopefully maybe we can even get some white lines down so we can see those stop signs.
Um, what, what is the, um, near address to where those trees are blocking the signs?
It's on Case Way.
Both?
Yes. Yes.
So we just need to, um, trim those trees, right?
They're not even fully grown trees yet. They're not even-
Oh, I'll get with Public Works and see what we can do. Now, I do know if, if there's any speed limit changes or any additional, uh, signs, I believe that has to come through the board. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe anything on, on the streets has, has to, we can't just, staff can't just go out there and put up a, a sign. It has to go through the board.
That's correct. And those stop signs are placed with a citizen's recommendation and then the Board of Commissioners voted to place those stop signs there. I know, um, Commissioner, we had talked, uh, I think last week about those signs in particular and you had mentioned, they still are temporary signs. Um, we ordered the correct posts so that they would match the rest of the neighborhood from our Public Works Department. The company that we order from, it takes about six months to get those posts in. Uh, the posts that we received were the incorrect post. And so we have reordered and are expecting those to be in relatively soon, um, to replace them from temporary signs to matching the rest of the development. And then with that, we'll also address the, the trees at that point as well.
Is one of those signs, the one that we approved that Chris Butler, the principal of the high school, um, came before us and spoke about that area was, um, an area of a cul-de-sac where a lot of children, uh, play kickball and different things?
Correct. Uh, this is actually directly in front of, uh, Mr. Butler's home and it's the intersection that he, he lives at. There are a lot of children that play in the, in the neighborhood there on that corner. And so it was intended to be a safety measure to, uh, ensure that kids are able to play safely.
I guess the trees are street trees, right?
They are.
Okay. So I would say that the safety of children, um, is much more important. I love trees. Don't say I don't like trees, but I would say that tree needs to be relocated.
It will likely be relocated or removed, yes.
And that would, because the safety of the children's more important than having a tree blocking a sign. So I'd say the tree being moved would be what we need to do.
Thank you.
Does anyone know what phase Cumberland Estates is?
Phase one.
Phase one? So that was recently, or it's on the agenda tonight for acceptance of infrastructure. So that's, that's, that's good for the city. A lot less-
Case Way. Case Way.
No, no, I was saying it's phase one of Cumberland Estates.
Right. Um, and I'm just saying it's-
Oh, the intersection of Case Way and Brayden Drive?
Because we're supposed to vote on releasing the bond this evening for phase one and two. Thank you.
Just to put my two cents in on that, I, I don't disagree that there may be need for alterations to the traffic flow and, and to mitigate speed and, and, and all of that. I do, however, think it's problematic when this board, the next board, the board after that, the board after that, just decide where and when signs should go up. So if we are going to look into that, much like the conversation about getting an appraisal, I would love to have a professional traffic engineer slash study done in the area of concern to determine what the best course of action would be. Not that we would necessarily get it wrong by throwing a sign up, but we could potentially an unforeseen error and cause more issues or whatever. So I, I think it would be smart if it is, if it feels, if, if we feel that there is a, a big enough problem to justify looking into that and spending the money to do so, I think it would be appropriate for us to have a professional, a professional take a look at it and, and suggest what we should do. Because maybe a stop sign isn't going to really deter the problem, maybe speed bumps or something else would be necessary, and I know that.
Yeah, we can't do speed bumps.
Well, I, I get it. There's app, emergency apparatus, I'm just, this is for the sake of conversation, I'm not suggesting anything. I am simply saying that a professional would give us an opinion that I think we should take into consideration if we're going to be doing something like that.
Vice Mayor, from a legal perspective, I, I think whenever we talk about traffic calming or the placement of signs, I think it's very important that that guidance is coming from a, a traffic engineer that, that studies and issues a report. And then the, the city would be wise probably to, to follow that report rather than substitute its own judgment for liability reasons.
Thank you.
We received a full document from. Commissioner Roberts is tied up in traffic, she'll be here soon. So, um, we received a document from Chief Hughes talking about speed bumps and their detriment to our safety vehicles. And so we handed that out, I guess, a couple of months ago? Okay. I just wanted to put that out there, just not, not, you know, not for anything.
For the record, I was not suggesting them. I'm just simply saying that there's alternatives.
I just wanted to put that out there just because a lot of people will reach out and say, can we do speed bumps? Can we do, you know, this, that, or another? And when, when Chief Hughes, you know, heard about that, he gave us the document. And basically, um, speed bumps are very hard on our safety, you know, like, our ambulances and fire trucks, and they're just not, not good for our, our emergency vehicles to go over, so, anyway.
Mayor, I also gave information about speed cushions that work the same as speed bumps, they're, they're a bit bigger, and the apparatus actually straddles the cushions so that they don't actually go over to wreck the apparatus, the fire truck ambulance or anything like that, because they're a lot shorter. They, they affect vehicles, but they don't affect apparatus because of the width of the vehicles, of the trucks.
Chief Hughes, can you speak to that, please?
Chief Hughes, and, and, uh, there's also newer devices that I'm aware of, and they're being used in some places in the United States that actually can raise and lower from the fire truck. Now, I, I don't know if they're available in Tennessee, but Chief is nodding his head, so he knows about them. I've heard about them in Spring Hill, they've investigated them, they're, tend to be cost prohibitive at this point.
Very, very cost prohibitive. Yes.
About how mu- how costly are they?
A lot.
I mean, just, just on our trucks, to have the signal device is about a 50 grand option.
Okay, yeah, that's probably not an option.
That's on every truck that it'd have to be on. And Commissioner Buffalini did talk about the, the pillows, and, and I was aware of them. The challenge is, our fire truck chassis, the width is way wider than the ambulance chassis. The ambulance chassis is on a same wheelbase as a normal pickup truck, so it would affect them, I think. It, it may not affect the fire truck, but you'd have to have such a wide width to, for the police cars, ambulances, and it may be too wide, then people are just driving through it then. But I, I was aware of the pillows, but it, it could be one of those things where it would still affect our ambulance.
I know they use those pillows in Franklin and Brentwood and.
I'm sorry?
They use those pillows in Franklin and Brentwood, Bellmead, they use them all over the place, so that's why I was just giving it as another option.
And there's, there are options, like I said, they're just, when people start talking about speed bumps, I was just sending that out, saying it's not good for responses and.
And, and I understand and respect that 100%. I'm just also concerned about the speeding vehicles going down certain these roads, especially with a, a major intersection that kids are constantly playing. I'd rather the truck get ruined than have a kid get hit by a vehicle or, you know, that's speeding down the road because we can't control the, the cars that are speeding.
Yeah, and I agree.
And our police department has done a great job with it. They've been patrolling the areas and other developments as well, so that's just my concern.
It wasn't so much the damage to the truck, it's, it's trying to provide patient care in the back of an ambulance when you're hitting bumps and going up and down is, is the other challenge.
Oh, uh, so if somebody's in the back of an ambulance and they're having some type of a cardiac event and they hit a bump, that could.
It's anything. I mean, if you're starting an IV on somebody or something, going down the road, giving medications, that, that's just, just one of the things with speed bumps, not the pillows, the, the speed bumps. Like I said, the, the pillows are an option, it's just another one of those things that would have to be studied by a traffic engineer and figured out if, if that would be the need.
Thank you, Chief.
And there's, there's other options, too. There's, uh, e- even though this doesn't make sense, narrow or straight, rather than wider streets tend to slow people down. So, I mean, some cities even go to, example, where they put, they'll put sidewalks on both sides of the streets and actually narrow the streets. They purposely put curves in the streets, there's things called chicanes that require, that basically take away the straight line in the road. And so a, a traffic engineer would probably be really a big benefit to the city to make sure that you end up with the best solution, not only for the, the kids and the families, but for the fire and ambulance response and the, and the patients. It, it's a very nuanced discussion that quickly goes over my head when they, when they start it. But that's what traffic, that's the world traffic engineers live in, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's after 7:00 PM. Do we want to continue and go into the time for our board meeting, or do we want to move the last two to another workshop?
Can we just address number six, if possible? Because I know that that's something that needs to be addressed.
So the information, informational city signage, we're going to move to another workshop?
Correct.
All right, so, um, item number six is utilization of Tree Bank funds.
So it's my understanding, after attending the Parks and Landscape Board and with Commissioner Wayne Hall as well, and he asked me to, to discuss this with you guys this evening because he's unable to attend, um, there's no clear direction for Parks and Landscape or for anybody that understands it or anybody on the board, the utilization of the Tree Bank Fund, of how we utilize it. Is it, do we just go order things and then submit a receipt to city management? How do we go about using the, the city funds? And is it, is there some sort of directions for how to use it?
It has to be on landscaping, on, on public property. And it's usually a budget item. I put in some money out of the Tree Bank this year for the Cloverleaf project, and I've been putting in about $40,000 just in case any landscaping comes up. You know, it's, uh, there could be projects, uh, the mayor and I have talked about possibly using some of it when we get into the Historical Village project on some of the landscaping, anything on, uh, the city public, public property, we could even use it on the, even though that's not our property, on the Cloverleaf, we can use it on, on trees like that. So it's, it's a budget, it gets budgeted, and then once it goes through, um, yes, invoices, it's just, it's accounted for just like any other expense.
So, say Cloverleaf, because that's what Mr. Hall, Commissioner Hall was asking about, specifically using that Tree Bank Fund for it. Do we have, does this have to go to the board? Does this, the whole process, do we have to amend the budget in order to do this? Or is this something that's allotted for in a separate line item?
There's nothing in the budget this year, fiscal year '25. I've got $75,000 in fiscal year '26 out of the Tree Bank, specifically for the Cloverleaf. I, I don't, that's a rough, I mean, I don't think it'll cost that, but I, I didn't want to, I mean, if, if we were going to spend more than that, yes, we would have to amend the budget. If we're spending less, it just sits there and rolls over into the, the next year. It's just not used.
And he also asked, how much is, is available right now in the Tree Bank Fund?
I believe, and I'll, I'll give this to you in your finance report, but currently, $569,297.99 as of March 30th.
Thank you.
Okay, so that will end our work, our work session for tonight. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and we will begin our Board of Commissioner meeting.